I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Dr. Meyer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Braswell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Be it resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for improvement employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and discipline of employees, or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia. Motion by Dr. Meyer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We're now in closed session. Motion by Mrs. Blaylock. Second by Dr. Meyer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And certification of closed meeting, whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the Motion by Dr. Meyer. Second by Ms. Shelley. Roll call starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blain, aye.
Gramp, aye. Motion carries seven zero. Items from closed meeting. Dr. Martin.
Motion that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent of personnel appointments, assignments, transfers, resignations, retirement, and request for leave of absence for the 2017-18 school year presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer. Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And if there are no objections, we are now in recess. To return to open session. Motion by Mr. Blain. Second by Ms. Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And if there are no objections, we are now in recess. To return to open session. Motion by Mr. Blain. Second by Ms. Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in open session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Shelley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Showing no public hearing this evening, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda this evening at the minutes of the May 1st, 2017 regular meeting, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Braswell. Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We are now in open session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Shelley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Showing no public hearing this evening, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
On the consent agenda this evening at the minutes of the May 1st, 2017 regular meeting, staff asked that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Braswell. Second by Ms. Shelley. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Note, there are some informational items. There's no instructional highlight this evening, no recognitions and awards. We'll move on to public comments. Dr. Martin.
The public comment segment of our board meetings is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker's allotted five minutes. We ask that they clearly state their name, address, and/or voting district for the board. A speaker may request additional time from the board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. First speaker is Jim Javinsky.
Sir, if you can turn your mic on or speak into it.
Is the mic on?
There we go. A little green light. This evening, I just, I wanted to come before you, my name is Jim Javinsky, for the record, again. 9401 Rapidan Drive, here in Spotsylvania is my address. And I just wanted to come and address the issue that you guys will be voting on later this evening regarding the future of custodial services here in Spotsylvania with our public schools. And I would like to encourage you to table the vote that is scheduled, to reconsider the evaluation committee's recommendation to award the contract to the CJ Maintenance Company of Maryland, and to reevaluate the situation, allow PBM Incorporated to make a presentation to you, or to the evaluation committee, and be a part of the final negotiations on this. CJ Maintenance, of course, is a Maryland-based company, as I'm understanding. And PBM is not only a Virginia-based company, but a local company here in the Fredericksburg region. And I believe from my heart that we should be spending our taxpayer dollars here in the community whenever we can. And speaking from the heart, PBM, when they needed a new website for their company, they didn't contact an out-of-state company to do the website work, which of course, there are plenty of that they could have called. Instead, they actually called me. I live here, I work here, do business on the side, and they called me to perform the duty of creating their website. So they're keeping those dollars, they're investing those dollars back here in Spotsylvania County. I'm paying the tax, I pay taxes here in Spotsylvania County, which then go to our schools, and of course, you get the picture. The idea, of course, is that if you were to keep PBM as your custodial company, providing custodial services for the public schools, you're not only investing in a local company, but you're investing in a local company that then invests back into our community. They also, you know, hire at least 300 or more employees that they have working in their company. These are local employees, people with local jobs. And right now, in this day and age, in this, with the economy the way it is, we want to see local jobs kept here in this region, in Spotsylvania, in the Fredericksburg area. So again, I just respectfully ask that you would reconsider the evaluation committee's recommendation to go with the out-of-state company and to look at PBM, at keeping them on as our custodial company here for our schools. Thank you.
James Swisher.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, Madam Chairwoman and esteemed board members. My name is James Swisher. I am a resident of Spotsylvania County in the Lee Hill District, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I, like Mr. Javinsky, would like to ask the board this evening to consider postponing its vote later this evening on the custodial contract, which awards the custodial services in the public schools in Spotsylvania County to CJ Maintenance, a Maryland company, as Mr. Javinsky noted earlier, and reconsider the incumbent provider, PBM Incorporated. Just to name a few reasons why I'd ask the board to consider this. First, CJ Maintenance, as a Maryland-based company, does not invest local jobs in our community like PBM. And I also, like Mr. Javinsky, would like to support, whenever possible, local providers in our community, and use our taxpayer dollars to support those local providers. Not only is PBM a Virginia-based company, but it is a local company located less than 20 miles from the very location that we stand here tonight. And they not only support our community with jobs, but they also support our local hospital foundations. They help keep the Rappahannock River clean with their charitable contributions. They help the homeless at the Thurman Brisbane Center. And like Mr. Javinsky, they turn to local providers like me in our market when they need support. So not only is there a benefit to all of our community, but a benefit to local businesses outside, outside of their direct employees. PBM has served Spotsylvania County schools admirably over the last five years. They have kind and supportive employees and unmatched responsiveness. And in fact, that responsiveness was highlighted a few years ago when there was a major pipe burst at Cortland High School, and they were able to respond quickly, within half an hour to be there to address that issue. And I'm concerned that a provider outside of our area will not be able to exhibit that kind of responsiveness. And while I support a competitive bid process and certainly understand that, in reviewing the detailed resolution available online, it does not appear that PBM was given the opportunity to come before the RFP Evaluation Committee to present their case and negotiate competitively in the final process. And I would certainly, certainly expect and hope that the incumbent would be given that opportunity after providing such great service over the last five years. So I, like Mr. Javinsky, would respectfully urge the board to postpone its vote this evening and ask the RFP Evaluation Committee to reconsider the proposal from PBM and provide them an opportunity to present their case prior to making a final decision. Thank you very much.
Haley Picore.
My name is Hale Picore. I live at 11241 Stone Mill Court, 22407. That's in Summer Lake. I own two properties in Spotsylvania County, and the two gentlemen before me have said just about everything that I would say, so I would encourage you to please, please reconsider and do what they ask and I ask, that you let PBM have another opportunity, or have an opportunity to bid on Spotsylvania County schools. Thank you.
Michael Weimer.
Good evening. My name is Michael Weimer, 10-826 Gordon Road in Spotsylvania County. And just like to kind of go over the same points that the last few people have made. Would like you guys to reconsider putting off your vote until PBM has an opportunity to respond to the competing bids. Think it's really vital that we try to keep as many jobs in the community as we possibly can, especially at this time, and going with an out-of-state company certainly does not help our local community. And everyone else has sort of made the same talking points that I have, so I'll end it with that. Thank you.
Ray Reagan.
Good evening. My name is Ray Reagan. I live at 6302 Forest Grove Drive in the Chancellors District, and I also would like to echo the comments that have been made before me. I would very much appreciate if you would delay your vote until PBM has had an opportunity to meet with those who are making this decision. I could echo the same things that have been said, but I'd like to look at it from a little bit different perspective as one who has used PBM services in the past, and having managed 24/7 facilities, and having that borderline break at 3:00 in the morning, and be able to call somebody and have somebody there within a very reasonable amount of time is a very comforting feeling. And PBM has done that for me for many, many years. So from a performance standpoint in that regard, I think PBM certainly proves their worth. The other area I've seen is that PBM, a number of years ago, there was one of the catastrophes, I think, out in the middle part of the country, and they gathered up a lot of supplies in the area to donate to that relief fund, but they didn't have a mechanism to get it there. They had no way to ship it. So I know firsthand, PBM rented a truck and drove the supplies out to the area to deliver those at their own expense, and I think it took them about a week to make that trip. So not only are they a very good company to perform the work, they're also a very compassionate company that hires local people and supports a lot of local functions here in the Spotsylvania area. So I would encourage you, again, to please delay your vote to give PBM an opportunity to renegotiate this contract. Thank you, and have a good evening.
Garrett Myers.
My name is Garrett Myers, and I live at 6500 Venison Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia, in Spotsylvania. I also agree with everything that was mentioned by the previous speakers before me, except for a couple of things. I also own a restoration business similar to PBM, and I know firsthand that all of our clients are very much, need people to show up on time when things go wrong, especially like floods and things of that nature. And any time that we've ever had a contract with a local vendor or company, and we were not on time, that gets awarded somewhere else. And I do know that PBM is an outstanding company when it comes to all aspects of the things mentioned, because we are one of their competitors on a regular basis. And I know that we've switched multiple jobs various times, but they've always been competitive. They've always done outstanding service, and I know that they have always given, I mean, more so than us. They've given back to the community in every which way. They employ more people than we do, and I think that, obviously, the more people that you employ, the more opportunities you give to people that are local in Spotsylvania. And opportunities, I mean, speak mountains, obviously. And I know they're an outstanding company, and as I said, one of the things that wasn't mentioned is they also give to the SPCA for animals, obviously. And I guess that's pretty much it. Sorry, I'm a little nervous, but you all have a great day. Thank you for hearing me speak.
Madam Chair, that's all the speakers that signed up.
Is there anyone in the audience that did not sign up that wishes to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to 13.01, Board Committee Reports. Ms. Shelley.
Thank you, Ms. Gramp. I just wanted to mention that for this Spotsylvania Education Foundation, this past week, it was sponsored by the school system, but the foundation as a part of the support and with business partners, they had a breakfast, the school system had a breakfast for our business partners, and we awarded Business Honor Roll to Horace Mann Insurance, Parish Learning Zone, and Sonic Drive-In, and these are the VSBA Business Honor Rolls. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware and thank all of our business partners on behalf of the school and the foundation. Thank you.
Any other board committee reports? Mr. Twy.
Health and Wellness Committee met this past week, and on a good note, our new no-nits policy, or allowing nits, has paid off in our county. We've had the same amount of incidents with lice this past school year up through April, and we've had one-half of the days lost from students. And that's because we did change our policy last year, and we've allowed the nits to be in school with the children, but at any rate, that is progress. And so the policy has a positive effect, and I think that's good. The second significant topic we discussed was that this is the first year that we had our students run a full-fledged food pantry drive, and we scored big. Everybody was pleased at the progress and the amount of food that was brought in so that we could help other students and families in the vicinity or perhaps the school. So a job well done to all who participated, and progress, people helping people. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on to 13.02. Ms. Colbert, you inform us about the compensation and benefits study.
To Madam Chair, the members of the board, good evening. Spotsylvania County Public Schools, in conjunction with Spotsylvania County cooperatively contracted with Evergreen Solutions LLC to conduct a compensation, classification, and benefits study for all employees. The consulting firm reviewed and analyzed several data points, including contract types, organization charts, job descriptions, pay tables, personnel policies, and employee data. David Bolenbach, Senior Analyst, will highlight the research methodology findings and recommendations as a result of this study. At this time, we'll turn it over to David. Thank you.
Good evening. I want to make sure you all have access to this PowerPoint presentation that I have in front of me. Excellent. So first thing I wanted to do is I wanted to go through our methodology, talk a little bit about our study process. We're also going to discuss what we had employees help us with, data we gathered from the folks here, and we'll get a little more detail about those. Afterwards, we're going to talk about the market survey, and then concluding with our recommendations, and we'll have some time at the end for questions. So the first thing we did was we conducted employee outreaches. We came to the division here, and we gave some orientation sessions that allowed us to introduce both the county and the school division employees to our study. They were able to ask questions, they were able to find out what we were asking of them, as well as learn about our company and a little bit about our methodology. From that point, the following week, we had orientation sessions, excuse me, focus groups. And those focus groups were where we asked questions of employees pertaining to their situation as it relates to compensation and classification and benefits. What are some issues they experienced, what are some problems they saw, some ways they might see about resolving those issues, and other pieces related to compensation. We also talked about classification issues, which is another main component of our study. Those orientation sessions took place the week of October 24th, while the focus groups took place the following week, the week of October 31st. And overall, we had 435 employees take place in those focus groups. The JAT process, which we'll talk about in a little more detail shortly, but mainly what that is, is our way to make sure that we understand what every position within the division actually is. Job descriptions exist, and those are very helpful, but over time, those may become outdated. They may not reflect the actual work performed by employees. And in this process, the job assessment tool, JAT, as we call it, really helps us get to the bottom of what exactly it is every single employee does, so that we know what every position is, what every job being performed is, and who does it, before we start going trying to make recommendations of how to improve either compensation or classification structures. With that, we had a 60% completion rate, so that is to say, 60% of the employees were given the assessment, which was the entirety of the staff here, faculty and staff here, completed the job assessment tool. So when we came to our outreach sessions, we found a couple of things. First, and very importantly, employees stated that they were satisfied working here and working in a field, whatever it may have been for that individual employee, where they felt that they could use their skills and abilities in an environment where they were appreciated, and that they felt that they could work constructively with others to really make a good situation for both employees and students here in the division. They also shared some concerns, most of which being related to the compensation structures, and how they felt that they were being compensated less than those of peer divisions. There are also some examples of internal equity, where some employees felt that they're, they were not receiving their steps, whether they were not being adequately compensated or recognized for their experience. And then some other employees shared issues with their classification titles. That is to say, the job title labeling their position is not accurate, or is incomplete, or may just be outdated. And we do have a couple of those addressed as well. And then one of the last things we heard was that almost every employee, this is fairly unanimous, but almost all employees felt that their benefit offerings were one of the main reasons for them to both seek and remain here, seek employment and remain here in the division. We also took a look at some of the data that we collected from the Human Resources Department here, and so here's just a quick summary of what we found. There are 17 pay schedules, and within those pay schedules, there are 229 utilized classifications. And at the time of our study, there were 3,069 employees. These are just the listings of the pay tables. I won't go into them, but in case you're wondering, the tables we recognized, these are them. Across these tables, so this summary here pertains to all of these salary tables. There's a much more detailed summary within your, the report that you have in front of you, starting on page 36, I believe. We found that the range spread, which generally is set between 50 and 70% for all ranges, was across the 17 tables, anywhere from 11.6% to about 134%. Now, the range spread is the difference between the minimum and the maximum of a position. So that is to say, if the minimum represents the starting rate, the maximum represents the highest possible attainable rate for that position, at least ideally. And those are usually set between 50 and 70% based on best practices, and as I pointed out, they were a little, very high in some places and very low in other places. Grade progression, so that is to say, if you compare two sequential positions to one another, what is the percentage increase in the midpoint? So in this case, we're talking about midpoint progression. Range from anywhere from half a percent to almost 38%, 37.8%. And generally, this is set somewhere between 3 and 6% according to best practices, but this is primarily a result of the numerous number of tables there are. There's really no consistency or comparison for positions. There's no unifying pay plan. So grade progression is difficult to measure, and as a result, really difficult to get any value out of that discussion. Now, going back to the number of tables, simply having 17 pay tables, in our opinion, is quite a few. It's more than we would recommend. Now, there's no best practice for how many pay tables or pay structures you can use, but at 17, it's become clear that they're difficult to manage, difficult to line up, and in many cases, could result in inequities going forward if the practice were to continue. Now, back to this JAT that we talked about briefly earlier. So employees were asked to provide data based on their roles and responsibilities here in the school division. Everyone, again, everyone was asked to complete this. Not everyone did, but everyone was given the opportunity. And primarily, one of the quantitative outputs of this process were these five factors here: leadership, working conditions, complexity, decision-making, and relationships. These produced an internal score, so to speak, that would allow us to get a better understanding of the internal hierarchy here in the division. JAT scores aren't perfect, but they are a good first step into figuring out what that structure would look like. This process was not, you know, employees fill it out and were complete. There was a lot of steps going into the JAT process, the first of which, of course, is the employees completing their survey, after which time the supervisors reviewed it. The folks in Human Resources got a chance to take a look at it to make sure nothing seemed to miss, and we at Evergreen read everything to make sure that we understood what every position was trying to tell us, and in cases where there were some issues, or we didn't understand what was going on, or what the employee was trying to say, we clarified those as well. So when we take the market data, which we're going to discuss very shortly, and we combine it with these, these job assessment tool scores, and as well as other information found in the JAT, we were able to... We found that the range spread, which generally is set between fifty and seventy percent for all ranges, was across the seventeen tables, anywhere from eleven point six percent to about a hundred and thirty-four percent. Now, the range spread is the difference between the minimum and the maximum of a position, so that is to say, if the minimum represents the starting rate, the maximum represents the highest possible attainable rate for that position, at least ideally. And those are usually set between fifty and seventy percent based on best practices, and as I pointed out, they were a little, very high in some places and very low in other places. Grade progression, so that is to say, if you compare two sequential positions to one another, what is the percentage increase in the midpoint? So in this case, we're talking about midpoint progression. It ranged from anywhere from half a percent to almost thirty-eight percent, thirty-seven point eight percent. And generally, this is set somewhere between three and six percent according to best practices, but this is primarily a result of the numerous number of tables there are. There's really no consistency or comparison for positions, there's no unifying pay plan. So grade progression is difficult to measure and as a result, really difficult to get any value out of that discussion. Now, going back to the number of tables, simply having seventeen pay tables, in our opinion, is quite a few, is more than we would recommend. Now, there's no best practice for how many pay tables or pay structures you can use, but at seventeen, it's become clear that they're difficult to manage, difficult to line up, and in many cases, could result in inequities going forward if the practice were to continue. Now, back to this JAT that we talked about briefly earlier. So employees were asked to provide data based on their roles and responsibilities here in the school division. Everyone, again, everyone was asked to complete this, not everyone did, but everyone was given the opportunity. And primarily, one of the quantitative outputs of this process were these five factors here: leadership, working conditions, complexity, decision-making, and relationships. These produced an internal score, so to speak, that would allow us to get a better understanding of the internal hierarchy here in the division. JAT scores aren't perfect, but they are a good first step into figuring out what that structure would look like. This process was not, you know, employees fill it out and were complete. There was a lot of steps going into the JAT process, the first of which, of course, is the employees completing their survey, after which time, the supervisors reviewed it, the folks in Human Resources got a chance to take a look at it to make sure nothing seemed to miss, and then we at Evergreen read everything to make sure that we understood what every position was trying to tell us, and in cases where there were some issues or we didn't understand what was going on, or what the employee was trying to say, we clarified those as well. So when we take the market data, which we're going to discuss very shortly, and we combine it with these job assessment tool scores, and as well as other information found in the JAT, we were able to really get the bulk of the information we needed for our analysis. And the other part of the JAT is, the other output of the JAT is all of the data necessary to update job descriptions, which is something that's still forthcoming out of our study. So the market survey consisted of sixty-five classifications. It would be ideal, in a perfect world, to survey all positions, but unfortunately, that's just not possible in many cases, most cases. However, across the seventeen peers that we surveyed, we collected over twelve hundred data points as it relates to ranges and actual data. But below that, at the bottom of the page, we have a listing of the breakdown of what we found at the three main comparison points for the school, for the division's ranges. It's at minimum, midpoint, and maximum. At this point, I want to point out that what we're talking about here, and when we talk about being ahead or behind market, we're not talking about actual employee salary. We're not talking about comparing one accountant to another or one teacher to another. We're talking about comparing the ranges themselves. So that is to say, the salary ranges, not the actual salaries, were found to be at minimum across all of the surveyed positions, fifty, excuse me, five point two percent above market. And then at midpoint, which was directly between minimum and maximum, so the average of the minimum and the maximum value for each of the ranges surveyed, was found to be four point six percent above market. And then finally, the maximum value for each range, excuse me, the maximum market range was found to be three point four percent above market on average as well. So again, the ranges themselves appear to be slightly ahead of market. That says nothing, again, of the employees' actual salaries. So using the information we gleaned from our market data, which is detailed a little more in chapter four of your report that you have in front of you, we have four main recommendations that we would like the school division to consider. These recommendations are generalized here, and there are certainly more steps involved in finalizing those recommendations. However, the first being, we would like to adopt the proposed salary tables that we have included on page six-three of your report. We feel that these proposed tables address the weaknesses identified in the assessment of current conditions, so we've sought to standardize the range spread, standardize the midpoint progression, and provide more unified tables that can be used to slot all positions within the school division in a more consistent and frankly, easier-to-understand Secondly, so that first piece is just a pay plan, doesn't mean anything without classification. So our second recommendation is to take the classifications that are included in our study and place them on the pay plan in the way that we've identified on page six-six. The purpose of this is, given what we found in the market and our analysis, we feel that the placement of each position, as shown on that exhibit, is consistent both internally and externally, based on the data we reviewed. Now, there's some costs associated with getting employees onto these plans. Now, having a pay plan and having classifications put on that pay plan effectively has no costs. We have to talk about the actual employees to figure out the cost of implementing such a plan or such a change. We have three primary ways of implementing these sorts of plans. This is not the end-all-be-all, there are a myriad of other ways that this might be done, but some examples are if we take what you currently have, and we try to bring, we take employees' current salaries and we only adjust those who need to be brought up to the minimum of their newly proposed range. So that is to say, the minimum, the bare minimum, you would need to do in order to get folks, get employees on these new plans, would be that solution one, bring to minimum. Anyone below minimum would be brought up to minimum, anyone above minimum would simply be left where they are. Now, this particular bring-to-minimum example provides no changes to the teacher plan, so this is truly looking just at non-instructional staff. This is the bare minimum implementation option here. However, there are two additional options, two that we'd like to present together. There's the range penetration parity and the classification date parity. Now, the second option, the range penetration parity, essentially applies each employee's current range penetration, so let's say they're twenty percent into their range or seventy-five percent into their range, it takes that percentage and applies it to the new ranges. What this does is it allows to keep, it allows the division to keep any internal equity decisions that is made in the past, the same. So let's say employees have been consistently brought in at a level that's appropriate relative to their years of experience and the years of experience of the employees around them. This plan would ensure that those decisions are kept in place, that those levels are maintained, and those differentials between employees are maintained as best as possible. The other option is the classification date parity. This is a little different. What we're doing here is you're looking at employees' class dates, so that is to say, how long they have been in their current position and trying to slot them into, or excuse me, place them on their range based on that class date. And so the, this was a plan that was also looked at by the county. So what we did here was we assumed, again, this is just an ideal number, it doesn't represent any actual promises or anything of that sort, but we assumed a thirty-year career. And so we said if an employee had thirty years in their position, so thirty years of class date, so they were hired roughly in their current position in nineteen eighty-seven, they would be at maximum of their position. If they had zero years of class experience, so zero, a zero in their class date, that is to say they were hired yesterday, they would be at minimum. And then everyone else would be slotted somewhere in between based on the breakdown of years. That plan, while certainly, certainly changes the differentials, changes the placements of employees' salaries relative to one another, relative to one another, has the highest degree of appreciation for an employee's experience here in the school division, as well as an appreciation for their loyalty and various other aspects like that. Now, these options, as I said before, are not definitive, these are not the only ways that you can do this. These plans, as you saw in the previous slide or on page six-nine, have some serious costs associated with them. Sometimes those aren't the easiest to do. So these can be phased in over a number of two or three years. These options can also have caps established to them. So let's say we like the way the class date parity works, but there should only be a maximum of fifteen percent increase for any given employee. Caps like that can be established. These would be set up not in order to favor or punish, so to speak, any particular class, but only to make the implementation possible and affordable, something the school division would be able to actually do. That would be the expressed and sole intent of making any changes like that. Now, the last recommendation would be to conduct a comprehensive salaries and pay study every three to five years. So if this were to be implemented over a phase of three years, we recommend anywhere from three to five years after that point to perform another one of these studies. Now, certainly, after you are, after you have implemented this study, the idea would be that such drastic change would not be necessary at the end of the subsequent study, but it is important, even if it's done on a smaller scale, to keep up with the market, to make sure that you're reviewing your placement relative to other school divisions or other organizations, to maintain external equity. And as well as the internal equity is equally important, to make sure that positions are reviewed internally, to make sure there isn't any increase in duties or change in scope or whatever it may be over the years. So again, all of our recommendations have a fairly straightforward goal. Our goal is to bring Spontivania County up to market and put them in the best possible place to be both a competitive employer, excuse me, recruiter, as well as be able to maintain and retain their current employees. The goal is to improve the internal and external position in the market. The goal is with the changes specifically in the salary schedules, to allow for flexibility in the administration of pay and compensation and other compensations, and also to provide growth within these scales, growth that is sustainable and both wide enough and also has a realistic cap to it. I understand there will be plenty of questions. So one thing to note before I do have questions, I mentioned it earlier, one piece outstanding is the job description updates. We will be updating job descriptions, using the JAT information, the data collected specifically from employees, to update those job descriptions, so that is still in the works currently.
Do we have any questions? Dr. Meyer.
Excuse me. I noticed you emphasized that you were comparing ranges and not actual salaries of employees.
Yes, sir.
So my question is then, on slide twelve, how did you arrive at the values for Solutions one, two, and three?
So these values were derived from their, well, the first one, the bring-to-minimum is simply bring employee salaries up to the current minimum based on their current salary. So that one has no real variable to it, just compares the minimum of their range to their current salary. The second one utilizes the current range penetration, which is found by comparing the current employee salary to the current range, and then the classification date parity involves the use of their own experience. So all of that is to say that we're not using any external factors to determine those salaries, it's used simply just a way to methodically place an employee's salary.
Mr. Twig.
And how many job descriptions?
I, sorry. Can you go back through that again?
Yes, sir.
Because I'm not understanding how you arrive at a number. When I was doing some of that kind of work, you know, I was charting individual salaries to a particular place on a salary scale. And as, depending on the longevity and anticipation of what would happen the following year, I could then calculate at that scale adjusted by X percent, how much was the cost going to be. So you kind of threw me when you said you're not really working with actual salaries.
No, we are not working with salaries within the market.
Within the market.
Right, correct. We're not comparing, when we did our markets analysis, when we were talking about the differentials on the ranges, I was talking specifically about range differentials, so comparing the ranges here within the division to the other market peers, not specifically the actual salaries of employees. When we did the cost scenarios, that does involve employees' actual salaries.
Okay.
Using a method very similar to what you were describing.
Okay. Because that was the only way I could see how you could arrive at.
Yes, sir.
The delta.
Sorry if I misunderstood your question.
What's driving the difference between Solution Two and Solution Three? I'm trying to get a better understanding of those two solutions.
Certainly. They're simply looking at different variables. One is just looking at the amount of tenure, class tenure, an employee has within the organization, whereas the other one is looking at where they are currently on the scale. Now, the reason why the number would be so different is because, let's say, in an employee's placement on the current plan, their years of experience outside the division is accounted for, or they have some other reason to be higher in the scale than their class date would represent, or their class date would suggest, then that would account for the increase in cost for that employee specifically. And then across any number of employees who are getting increases, it would be case-by-case specific about why that number is higher.
I'll pass, because I'll have a follow-up question afterwards. Thank you.
Mr. Twig.
And how many job descriptions are you writing at this time?
We would be, we would be writing or updating job descriptions for all two hundred and twenty-nine classifications, if there were any changes to be made.
With no recommendation to adjust that down a hundred or two hundred? Or has that been considered?
Oh, we have considered consolidating classifications, and we did not feel that was necessary at this time.
Okay. And market analysis that you referenced a moment ago, that's with the peer group that you mentioned at the outset?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And did all of your data come from four hundred and fifty people? And data points from HR? Am I to read that, is that how?
Yes, so the first step would be, so you're asking if HR of the peer organizations completed the survey and actually provided that data to us? Is that your question?
Yes. Well, it correlates with it, yes.
In many cases, that was our first approach. I believe over half were able to provide a completed survey, while the other half provided us with job titles and their own pay tables in order to make the determinations ourselves.
Am I to assume from the presentation that we have seventeen classifications remaining along with the two hundred and twenty-plus job descriptions?
No, there are, actually, if you refer to page six-three of the report, there are only four salary tables being recommended.
Seven and four, okay.
Seven, from seventeen to four.
Seven, yeah, right, seventeen to four.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then, um, last question for now. Where, what categories, what disciplines would go up, given our precise scenario, and which would go down? Just a general response, please.
In terms of employees' actual salaries, nobody's salary will be decreased as a result of the study. The expressed intent of this study was to only adjust actual salaries upward if necessary, and so nobody's salary's been decreased. As far as which specific classification's ranges went up or down, I don't have that information in its complete form right this second, but I do know there were some adjustments really across the board.
Was the not adjusting any salaries downward one of the premise points?
Yes, sir, it was both within our proposal and as well as a promise we had made to employees when we were discussing this study in the outreach.
Okay, your recommendation, but was it also the schools?
I believe it.
Or was that all you?
I believe it was. I cannot recall exactly at this time if that was something the school had proposed, but that is always a part of our comp and class studies, is to never decrease employees' actual pay.
I'm going to just respond to that. I believe that, at least from the point in which we became engaged in the process following the awarding of Evergreen, I believe that was the premise that they presented. I don't believe there was any discussion otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Bolenbach.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple of questions. First question has to do with the data and how it was gathered. You mentioned several times that you gave high consideration to range, and my question is, is why was there more consideration given to range as opposed to mode? Mode of payment. So in other words, you may have, you might have a range with a few people earning maybe on the lower end and more people on the higher end or vice versa, but now the range is capturing something that may not be as accurate as maybe a mode. So I just wanted to ask, why did we consider range primarily as the determinant as opposed to mode?
So if we start with range, we're able to establish the upper and lower limits appropriate for a position. And then from there, we can use any number of implementation options based on the compensation philosophy of the school division, what we want to reward, what we think is important to identify with employees to determine their salaries, and then you can place salaries based on that information. The ranges themselves are used in the majority of salary studies as the primary point of comparison, because there's really no, there's no independent variables with a range. There's an employee's salary, or whatever it may be, could be adjusted by any number of different factors, but the range itself is published and it is the upper and lower limits, and that's what we are seeking to establish.
Yeah.
You had asked about mode, and I'm not quite understanding.
Well, mode, mode is where the larger number of the points are consolidated at. It's not, we're not talking average, we're talking mode. And so in a lot of cases, range does not truly capture that in a definitive way, because you can have two or three at the lower end of the range and twenty at the higher end of the range, or vice versa.
Certainly.
And so now your range is now skewed by the data, because it's saying one thing, but it's not really reflecting what we're trying to measure. And so what I was trying to ask is, is why were we using range as opposed to mode?
I might not have explained the situation appropriately, I apologize. When you're referring to mode, it sounds like you're referring to employees' salary placements within a range of possibilities.
Precisely, yes, sir.
We're talking specifically about published pay ranges, something that an organization might put up when they're hiring an employee, saying this position earns anywhere from twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand, and it's not necessarily representative of any employee's actual salary.
Okay.
So we're not talking about comparing a range of salaries, we're talking about comparing a range, we're talking about comparing published salary ranges from other organizations.
Okay, I understand what you're saying then.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, the other question I have, it pertains to your methodology and your course of action. It appears that, excuse me, it appears that you have, in recommendation number three, it looks like a series of courses of action and not a recommendation. And so. And so, since that is a series of courses of action for us to consider, what are the distinct advantages and disadvantages to each course of action? How do we make a determination of these recommendations not knowing what are the significant advantages to the division or disadvantages, other than just cost?
Certainly. These all, as you're indicating, all come with their own advantages and disadvantages. Of course, bring to minimum options, I was just gonna essentially establish what the difference between them is and then what, what some of the benefits and drawbacks of each are. Is that appropriate?
Yes, precisely, yeah.
Excellent. So the bring to minimum, fairly simply, is the easiest way to implement our recommendations. It is the most affordable, and it is essentially a way to get the scales in place. Now, we would never recommend just implementing bring to minimum, but unfortunately for many organizations, that's the bulk of what they're able to do. Our main recommendation, if we were to talk about which course of action we recommend, it would be one of the two options here, range penetration parity and classification date parity. As I talked about earlier, range penetration day parity, excuse me, range penetration parity has the benefit of essentially maintaining the individual salary distributions within the school division that are already in place. So if you feel, if the folks in HR feel, or whoever's asked feel, that salaries are appropriate relative to one another, that is to say that employee A's salary is appropriate relative to where employee B's salary is within that same range, this maintains that. This keeps that distribution the same. And the benefit of that is if the internal equity, if you find that what you currently have is internally equitable in terms of employees' actual salary, then you could use this option to simply maintain that and to keep that going further. However, the downside of that is if there's any compression, if there's any concerns with employee, too many employees being clustered at the minimum, this only keeps that in place. This doesn't change that. This maintains that. So if things are good, range penetration parity is a good course of action. But if employee's salary placement is shaky, if it's either been done inconsistently or due to budget constraints, or whatever it may be, the employee salary distribution is not as would be desired, so there's a lot of compression, a lot of clustering in the lower levels, or lower ranges, excuse me, lower quadrant of the range, then that option might not be the best way to go. Now, the other option, classification date parity, looks specifically at the length of time an employee's been in their classification. I mean, you could use any number of variables for this sort of calculation. You could use overall experience, if you had that data on hand. You could use tenure, the amount of time an employee's been with the division overall, regardless of what position they were in, whatever variable you might like to use. We like classification date parity simply because it's the one based on the data we have that we can point to and say, this person's been, or this employee has been in their classification for five years, so they should be at some level, some percentage placement into their range based on that level of experience. And what it does is it solves or addresses, attempts to solve, the inequities you might find between employees' salaries. So as we were talking about the drawbacks of the range penetration parity, being that if there's a problem, if there's compression or clustering anywhere, you kind of maintain that going forward, this would attempt to solve that based on the classification date variable. So this would say, if an employee's been here for four years, they'd be at this level. If they've been here for five years, they'd be a little higher, six years, a little higher than that, and so on. And so your distribution appears more appropriate based strictly on the classification date. That is just one of many ways you might approach this.
And I'd just like to just follow up with a comment.
Yes, sir.
And I, I'm starting to track your course of action, but for, I guess for my understanding of it, it seems like a course of action should be separate from a recommendation, and then there should be some form of ability to war game those courses of action so we can make a determination of which recommendation makes sense for the division.
Absolutely.
Not necessarily which one you think makes sense.
Absolutely. And perhaps recommendation was too strong a word. A course of action does seem appropriate.
Thank you.
This is the way we look at this. Here are some options. There are other ways to implement them, and we'll continue to work to find the one that works.
Mr. Blaine.
You've talked quite a bit about market. Did you describe the market that you're dealing with, how it was determined, the differences within the market?
We compared to 16 school divisions. Those were determined by a combination of employee feedback, as well as looking at comparable districts in terms both of size, relative geography, as well as population served, and budgets. There were a number of variables we looked at, and any number of reasons why we might have picked an organization, and that's, those are, those are the main things we look at, their location, their size, and their budget.
Mm-hmm.
And that's how we determined which school divisions to look at, and we reviewed those, compared those against a list of divisions that were shared with us by employees. We were told where employees were leaving to, where they were finding additional jobs, or where they were finding better salaries, better pay, where they were looking, what's close by to them, where they're driving from, any number of factors that would influence why they think we should take a look at those organizations. We considered all of those.
And you've talked a lot about the range and so on. Where are our employees located on this, this range? Do we have, 50% of the employees are in the upper quartile? How many are in the lower quartile?
I don't have the exact figure right in front of me, but if you refer to page 3... 6, I believe it is. Excuse me, page 36, where we talk about the quartile analysis, you can see that the majority of employees are below midpoint. They're in the lower, the lower half of the range.
The majority of our employees?
Yes, sir.
Like 80%?
I don't have the exact figure on hand. I apologize. [laughing] We had, we had made some notes earlier, but that was not one of the ones I made. I'm sorry.
Well, you've got the information.
We have the information, yes, sir.
In here, so that's...
It is included.
Because one of our challenges, as you probably are aware, is that...
Absolutely.
We know when we're hiring teachers, especially, many times, I'm sure, we're even going outside what you're calling the market because they're not available.
Absolutely.
Here. And some of our teachers complain and say, well, yeah, I can go drive a half hour north of here, and I'm gonna get $10,000 or $20,000 more per year for where I am right now.
That was certainly a concern we heard a lot of.
How about academic, in terms of our professional staff? Where does academic preparation tie in with what you've talked about? If they have a bachelor's, or they got a bachelor's plus 15, or a master's, or whatever?
In terms of specifically instructional personnel, or all employees?
In terms of your general categorization of our, of our employees, and you try to pick out a person and say, where do they fit? Whereas, does the salary schedule itself identify all of those factors?
Within, within the survey that we sent out to different peers, to the various peers, we included the credentials required for that position, so the level of education, experience, and so on. So when they were making their matches, and when we were, when necessary, making the matches, we did take into account the relative requirements for every position.
You did?
Yes, sir.
I think his question was more, what if they exceed the requirements for that? I mean...
If the actual employee within that position exceeds?
Or is the National Board certified? Or all, all the things that, that we pay more for, if you're only giving us four scales, I mean, I haven't read this study intensively.
Well, this...
But are you saying that, that the bachelor's degree and the doctorate, this National Board certified teaching in the same position should get the same pay?
We have recommendations for all sorts of supplements, also found within the latter half of the market chapter. So those are detailed in there, what we found in the market, as well as when comparing it, how they compare to the, the scales here. As far as the additional education levels for teachers, those are still included in the teacher pay scale.
If it's okay, I also wanted Mr. Blaine had asked a question, Ms. Gramp, if I might just, I believe that he was asking about the salary placement by grade when he was looking at the, wanting to know the percentage of where employees were currently placed. Do you, I, I'm looking at 313, 314, and 315. Is that...
You're talking about where within their ranges they're placed?
Right. Where within their ranges, because he was asking...
Yes, sir.
For example, how, what percentage of employees would be falling currently below the midpoint?
Correct.
And I wanted to just reference those pages, Mr. Blaine, because I think that speaks to what you were asking. 313, 314.
Thank you.
I'll find it.
Dr. Meyer.
Thank you very much for your report. I'm, I'm just trying to understand a little bit more with the market, the, the market surveys or, or what you did with the other markets. So I know a lot of our people leave to go north because that's where the salaries are significantly more. Are, and so they were included in, in the market analysis?
Several peers from the north, yes.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just looking at like just our surrounding, I'm, I'll say Fredericksburg and Sp- and Stafford, just right there. They do make a little bit more than ours, teachers do, and just teacher's salary. And looking at what you put for the, your suggestions for the proposed teacher's salary, further down the pay scale, it looks, I, I did the math I was putting in, but how many hours, when, because you have it as an hourly rate, how many hours and how many days did you calculate for to get these hourly rates?
So they're presented in hourly so that when you're trying to convert to any number of hour and day combinations, you can use the same pay table to do so.
Okay, so if it was like a 10-month employee, or a 10 and a half month employee, they would use, we would be able to use those same numbers to be able to make that salary. That, that makes sense. But let's just say for your regular 10-month teacher with, with no, no, your brand new teacher, what is the hourly, like how many hours per day or per week did, were you counting to kind of come up with an annual salary? Did you do anything like that? Or how many days? I'm just trying to figure out what their annual salary would be, because that's how we've been doing it in the past. So kind of do, so I can compare apples to apples.
Certainly. What, what's complicating that response is we really looked at every employee individually at that point. They were placed on this scale, and the scale we were conceptualizing hourly. So the scale is an hourly scale. And so when we're trying to figure out what their annual salary becomes, it's based on the number of hours they work. So we have in our data, based on their month and day combination, how many hours they would work in total. So if a day is seven and a half hours long, times however many days it is, we would then multiply that figure times that hourly rate, whatever we identified as appropriate based on any, any of these analyses here, and that's how we would determine their annual salary.
Okay, thank you. Because my, my concern with, I don't like using hourly because if we did for, for our, most of our staff, it would be over the seven and a half hours a day that they work, because even though that's contract, we know that everybody out there [laughing] works way more than that.
Understood.
Um...
This would be based off their contractual hours.
It would be off to their contractual hours.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well then, based on contractual hours, I'm seeing at the very bottom, the step zero is a little bit less, not a lot less, than what we're giving now. I do like it going further up into the pay scale because it does give our employees a little bit more. And I'm just looking at the teacher's scale.
Certainly.
And even the parascale a little bit. So I, I did want to mention that. And then going on with Mr. Blaine's, what he was asking about the, the salary placement, it looks like for, we have 79% of our employees are below the midpoint. Only 21% are above the midpoint, but we have 79% of our employees are below mid, using the, in their salary scales right now. And then also, I'm, I'm wondering, you have your recommendations. If you took into account that our salary scales, because we had last year's salary scale is different than next year's salary scale, and it was last year's salary scale was different from the year before, because 15 one year is not going to be what 15 is, it could even be less than what 15 is the following year, if, if that was all taken into account as well.
So this data looks at the state of things when we were brought in. We will, if necessary, and we're expecting to do so, update the data for the most recent year, specifically given the changes in your most recent budget agreements. So that we are understanding and anticipating that what we have in front of you might change based on the realities that's, that are in place now versus when we started. And we, we did not consider this yet, but we will.
Dr. Meyer.
As you did for the teacher on Exhibit 6D, where you have the steps going from 0 to 38, and then giving credit for the degrees all the way through the doctorate, on Exhibit 6A through 6C, because I saw, I heard you said you took from 17 down to four.
What page is that on, Jim?
It's on page 6-3. And I'm comparing the, the layout of 6-3 to 6-4.
So you're wondering why it looks different?
You got it.
Okay.
Because, and then I'm, my follow-up would be, if, as was shown on 6-4 for the, for the teachings or instructional staff, but for the others, the administrative, the professional, and the support, there were either 10, 15, 10 or 15 levels, but it's all then based on mid, mid, and max.
Yes, sir.
Was, were, is a follow-up to do a, like a uniform pay schedule for the different 6A, 6B, and 6C? Or how is this implemented?
Certainly. So what this is, was we're recommending an open range plan for those positions. So currently, every position, vast majority, almost all positions, are slotted based on a step plan. And what we found specifically in this division, as well as other divisions, that it becomes difficult over time to consistently fund step plans and the rigidity that they, they kind of have built inherently. If a step is a 2.1% increase, if there's not 2.1% in the increase in salary budget, then that simply can't be done, cannot give a step. And so the intention was to provide open range plans that would be a little more flexible and allow the school division to essentially give raises as it's, as it's able and, and less, and beholden less to those fixed amounts that in the past have prohibited any, any increases from being given at all. Now, you asked about a unifying table between those three. No, our intention is for these three tables to remain separated. What they do is they allow independent growth from one another, so for some reason, if there is, in the next few years, professional level positions have different shifts in the market than support level positions than administrative level positions, they allow you a small degree of flexibility to manipulate and adjust those scales independently of one another, so that you're not, when you have to make one small change anywhere on the scale, having to make changes across, across all positions.
Now, what distinguishes administrative and professional? Support, I understand.
Certainly. Support are, administrative and professional are, the line is really drawn at upper level management, directors, superintendents, so on. And then professional are anywhere from certified staff, folks who need degrees or certain certifications, advanced certifications, to perform their work outside of trade, outside of just a trade certification. And also, middle management positions are included on, on the professional scale.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out that, make sure that I'm summarizing it correctly, from what I've read, that on all three comparisons, mid, mid, and max, that where our ranges are less than 5% above market.
5% or less. I think the minimum was a little bit above 5.
Right. So they're all pretty competitive.
We would consider...
We're, we're, we're a competitive division.
Absolutely.
But as we pointed out, most of our employees, I mean, are not, 79% are below mid on our ranges. So those would even adjust that percentage, again, if you only factored in actual salaries versus actual salaries instead of our ranges.
Correct.
So, okay. So, that being said, we're going from 17 schedules supposed, recommended to four, and so that... so that's all going to, would all theoretically change all of that together. So, when we want to go back and look, and say in three years, say we implemented this, and in three years, we went back and looked at the same 17 schools that we're comparing to, how similar are our competitives moving in that direction? I mean, we obviously inherited, this administration and this board inherited these, a little outdated pay scales. So, the people that you're comparing to, are they moving in the same direction in the pay scales? So, that'd be even easier to compare and to compete across the market, or are more of the places staying with the more outdated pay scales?
Question sort of two different pieces that I'm going to answer. The first is, while I can't speak for exactly what the 16 peers or the Commonwealth are doing in terms of consolidating their scales or expanding or whatever it may be, we are seeing nationally in the work we're doing across the country that organizations with a large number of pay scales, specifically ones that have one or two ranges on them that are really sort of redundant in terms of just looking at the dollar amounts themselves, they are consolidating. This is something that's happening across the board. Now, to your question about simplifying the comparison process in the future, simply because of what we're looking at, we're looking at comparing positions to positions. So, if an organization has a position, I keep using accountant, but I'm going to go back to, has an accounting position, that accounting position will be compared to the position here, the relevant position here, regardless of what pay table it's on, we're just going to look at those ranges appropriate to that position and to the duties performed. So, that is to say, it simplifies administration and may simplify the process in the future, but simply because of the methodology, it really wouldn't simplify the survey process simply because we're reducing the number of scales and also, the organization might be doing the same.
The question was less for you guys.
No, no, I'm talking for you.
And more for our, like, our employees that are interviewing, you know, if the 17 that you surveyed, I was just wondering if everybody's moving towards that or if they, you know, what they would expect. But if you said it's across the nation, everybody's trying to simplify, which would make sense. I mean, we know that our step schedules are very outdated, so.
The outdated process that you're referring to of just having, because I think there are some position, there are some pay schedules that have one range on that pay schedule. And so, there are a lot of moves across the country to simplify that process, even just from an administrative standpoint in terms of coding, but also just a practical standpoint. Employees rarely know. We had trouble starting out reading those scales. I can only imagine that folks who don't do this for a living have the same trouble.
And the last question that I came to in your recommendations, the three options that you gave dollar amounts for. I don't understand if we just took this, what we have now, and we condensed it to the proposed four tables and didn't change much of anything else, how much is that got? Is that the minimum amount or if that?
So, the question is if we took what you have now, apply the new schedules, and just put employees as close as possible to where they currently are.
Right.
In general, that would look like the bring the minimum, with the exception of that does not take into account the teachers who have to be placed on a step. And so, every teacher's salary is going to change at least a little bit.
Right, so, just to do the bare minimum of changing into the simple schedules, it's going to be money?
Yes.
More than the $100,000 that was, okay.
Correct, that is just for non-instructional employees, that number.
Right, got it, okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Blaylock?
I've listened to my colleagues, they all brought up great questions and great points, and this is probably a very simplistic way to put it, but just the snapshot of it, it seems that, I agree with you, we had a lot of pay scales. And there was areas that you might, could say that things weren't quite as fair as they could be because of the amount of pay scales, but somehow, this seems very simplistic for something as complex as the public school system, as Ms. Grant pointed out, with people who have different levels of educational degrees that allow for them to have more income maybe than someone who does not have that degree. So, do you feel that these, the four scales is conducive to something as complex as a public school system, as big as we are? I felt like it was a little too simplistic.
Certainly, the structure itself is something that we have the utmost faith in. We've implemented, with the exception of teachers, if we take faculty out of the equation, we've implemented unified plans in different school divisions before, school districts in other states. Really, what you're talking about is the availability of spaces, so to speak, within those scales. And so, currently, you'll see there are 15 on the support schedule, 15 on the professional. If the space between those ranges needs to decrease such that the number of grades increases in order to accommodate for some of the more nuanced differences between positions, that can be done. But this sort of structure is really flexible, and it allows you to do something like that.
Dr. Baker.
David, I don't want to speak for the board, but one thing that I think that I've heard, and I just wanted to see if it would be possible, can the bring-to-minimum option that you have given an amount for, again, only non-instructional staff, can you provide an estimate of that cost going across the board?
Absolutely, certainly we.
So that we could have that as something else?
Absolutely.
To move forward. The other, could you just, I know that there were some discussions that occurred in our reviewing the report question-wise, and I think it goes, speaks to Ms. Blaylock's. Could you make sure that for our board and others, that the distinction between what we were talking about with salary schedules, which there are 17, and then the actual scales, grades within those schedules, because even though we would go to four schedules, we would still have within each schedule multiple employee scales or grades. Could you make, do better than me in providing the distinction so that that part's clear?
Certainly. So, effectively, we could keep the same number of schedules, because your concern was consolidating the number of schedules down to four. We could keep the same number of schedules and simply change the range for each position such that it would match exactly what we've proposed here. We could say the range for some position is equivalent to what we have for grade 12. Range for another position is equivalent for what we have for grade 15 on the professional schedule. Those are just ranges, and this is simply a different way of organizing that information. So, it's no more or less complex, technically speaking, than what you currently have, but it is much easier to manage on a person's, on a human side. Because the ranges themselves apply to individual positions versus several positions, as are currently, the ranges provide, apply to individual positions and not to several positions that our current proposal recommends. But the differences in many cases between what we would recommend if we were to grade each position individually and establish their own range for each position, we're talking fractions of percentage differences in what we've recommended in terms of a structure, a structured approach versus the individual approach. The difference, again, comes down to how finely you want to draw the lines. In this case, we've chosen for the professional and support a midpoint progression of 6%. That means that every position is within, or excuse me, every grade is within 6% of one another. And so, if there's a position who needs to be slotted on a grade 12, there are only 6% at every given point above the position in grade 11. And to my point earlier, if it's found through the course of practically implementing this option, that there needs to be some more differentiation, those midpoint progressions can change. They can be reduced, and more grades could be added. It allows you the ability to do that. And, so again, the number of schedules, while it looks like you're essentially eliminating a lot of schedules, the change is not quite as pronounced on a number side as it might appear. Did that address?
Kind of a follow-up question, and I may be pulling in finance. We're getting ready to go to the MUNIS system, and so I'm thinking in practicality, sometimes the more finite you have, it's easier to keep track than it is if it's generic. And so, I, you know, if we're going to four schedules or grades, is that, is it better to have 17 or is it better to have four when we're trying to go to MUNIS as of July 5th, and we're going to be using payroll as of October?
Just as a point of clarification, we are going to 40 grades, not necessarily four.
We did anticipate this question this evening, Dr. Meyer, and when you look at where we are with the board approving the budget on May the 1st, contracts are scheduled to go out June the 1st. We will not be ready to roll this out for FY '18. We're going to need time to work with it, and we're looking at FY '19. But we can make it happen.
But I guess, it's how simplistic do we?
Right.
Do we want it? And I think we're going to have to be, I, you know, I don't know how the other board members feel, but I would like to hear from staff as to how this comes forward that works within the finance system and that we're not creating a monster for us, you know?
Right.
That we are truly making a step forward, you know, as was presented to try to simplify it, but let's make sure that we can implement it and track it and do the things that have been talked about.
We are scheduled to go live tentatively with the payroll system October 1st. So, what we would do when we have our work session in November, staff will come back to you with some options for consideration, because it is going to take time.
Ms. Shelley.
I have not been able to make it through all of these pages yet, but the county put up a PowerPoint, a one slide, that compared titled, I'm going to say, titled positions between the county and the schools. And I'm thinking they, those, they're not comparable. Can you tell me if I am correct, if I am incorrect, and how we would go about what that said, that actual, you don't know, you might know what slide I'm talking about. Thank you.
I have stated, that, so what was mentioned was, within a very early draft, within a very early draft of our report for the county, they had asked that we include a comparison to positions here within the school division. The school division was, if I recall correctly, and don't quote me on that, but I'm fairly certain the school division was included as a market peer for the county. And so, they wanted to see both the aggregate results as well as the actual comparisons to the school division here. When we made those comparisons, the initial run-through, which is what they had, which is what was shown, was a simple, straight comparison of titles. This title looks the same as this title, those were lined up to one another. When we actually do this process, when we actually go through and perform our market survey, we're looking at more than just job titles, we're looking at responsibilities, at scope of work, at requirements in terms of education and experience, and so much more than what was really presented in that chart. And that chart was, in fact, misleading to the point that we decided to remove it from the report and simply write a short summary within their chapters that said, a comparison was made, the differential was as it was, I forget the exact figures, I apologize. But differential was what it was, but we also included the very important and very honest caveat that the comparisons made should be taken with a grain of salt, and they're not one-to-one comparisons. And so, in addition, in addition to those comparisons not being of the highest degree of validity, if you will, they weren't apples to apples in many cases. The range data was very premature. We had had the school division's data for a short amount of time, in addition to the county's data, and so we made those comparisons. We had, we applied the ranges that we had in terms of what we were currently, or how we were currently interpreting the ranges. Well, after we decided to remove that exhibit, we had some discussions with the folks in the school division independently, and determined that some of the data that we had needed to be adjusted. Some of the figures were a little lower than they should have been, or a little higher than they should have been, really was all over the place in some cases. And so, that is to say, the numbers, even the numbers shown on that chart aren't necessarily reflective of the reality here in the school division. So, it would be my assessment to use extreme caution when looking at that comparison to make any real decisions.
Thank you, but you did say that it was, you did delete it from your present tape, from your presentation or your?
It was not included in the final.
Not included in your report.
In the final report. Just the summary of the comparison was included, not the comparison itself.
Thank you.
Mr. Blain.
Just briefly, I'm showing some lack of experience here, I think. But in the application, when you're talking about experience, for example, we hire people, and they say, I taught in another school ABC for seven years. I'm the administrator, and saying, you know, where do I want to place this person? And what kind of flexibility do we have at that point in saying, well, based on experience, I'm going to add you, put you up two steps? Do they have that ability to do that? Is there, I'm getting into a very different area, I recognize.
Certainly. In terms of new hire placement and salary placements going forward, we would recommend that the division continue with its process of trying to maintain internal equity specifically for everywhere, but specifically for teachers, because that is, I think there are some legal implications of not doing so. So, specifically for teachers, we are recommending that the county, the division continue its current practice of placing relative to experience and education, excuse me, experience and the relative position of other employees with the same experience.
So, there's a lot of personal judgment, it seems to me.
The system, as we understand it, does not have any personal judgment. And that may, may be misrepresenting what's actually the reality that you might be experiencing, but it's our understanding that the placement of teachers specifically refers to the experience and the experience only.
Are there any further questions? Well, thank you very much for your presentation. Am I correct in assuming that if there are further questions from reading the manual, we can reach out?
Absolutely. I have some cards in my bag if anyone would like them. Additionally, Dr. Baker is, and the HR staff all know how to get ahold of me, and we welcome any questions we'll be able to answer.
Okay, thank you very much. And we will now move on to action items. Item 14.01, Budget Amendment Number 9, Ms. Gaines.
Thank you, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. I'm going to also ask if Pete Sakari could join me at the podium. He is our Director of Technology. This evening, staff is pleased to share that the federal government E-Rate program allows eligible schools and libraries to receive discounts on certain technology services. The school division pays the vendor for these services, and then we are reimbursed from the federal government. This year, we budgeted $90,455. Based on monies received through last week, we are projected to collect $248,045. By way of next steps, if this item is approved tonight, it will go to the County Finance Committee, May 18th. Then it will go to the Board of Supervisors on June 15th. We are hopeful to expedite this process because there are expenses that are coded to the CIP that would better fit the operating budget. These funds are being used for the web filter maintenance fees. At this time, staff is recommending that the school board approve, requesting from the Board of Supervisors, additional budget appropriation in the amount of $157,590 for technology purchases funded by receded E-Rate revenues. And we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make the motion, we approve.
Motion by Mrs. Blaylock, a second by Ms. Shelley. Any questions? Mr. Braswell.
Ms. Gaines, I know it says a net zero increase. Okay, explain to me how that is if we're asking for more money, I don't understand that.
Very good question. So, what happens, Mr. Braswell? It's a net zero because above the line, you're going to have revenues come in of $157,000. Below the line, you'll have expenses of $157,000. When you subtract the two, the net zero, the net difference is zero.
Okay, and this is where I'm missing it then. I mean, I get that. Why do we have to ask for the money?
Okay, so what had happened when we initially did our budget? We had budgeted $90,455. Based on monies that were received last week, we're now going to collect $249,000. So, because of that, in order to spend the funds, you have to have the monies appropriated. And that appropriation comes from the Board of Supervisors.
So, they're giving us appropriation, they're not actually giving us more money?
That is correct, it's appropriation, sir.
Any more discussion? All right, call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried seven zero. Thank you, Ms. Gaines and Mr. Sakari. And on to 14.02, approval of custodial services, third-party vendor, Mr. Elpico and Ms. Finley.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. The school division issued a request for proposals for custodial services. The procurement was advertised on Eva, Virginia statewide electronic procurement platform, advertised in the Freelance Star, and posted on the division's purchasing website. The evaluation committee, which consisted of seven members, individually reviewed and scored each of the proposals that were submitted. Once the scoring was complete, the purchasing department compiled the results. Interviews were then conducted with the top three scoring offerers. After interviews were complete, negotiations were then conducted with the top two scoring offerers. CJ Maintenance was selected as the most qualified offer based on the RFP evaluation factors. And I would also like to add an additional note that we have a very stringent process that we are required to follow. No deviations from the process were allowed. If there were any deviations, the process would have been immediately stopped, and we would have had to start from scratch. With that being said, the RFP evaluation committee is recommending the custodial contract be awarded to CJ Maintenance. This contract will be for one year, and will have four possible one-year renewal options. Thank you, we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I will move to approve the motion.
Motion made by Mr. Blaine to approve the recommended actions, second by Mr. Braswell, and I do believe Mr. Blaine has a question.
Would you repeat what you've just said about there are no exceptions to this rule?
Yes, sir, we have a very stringent process that we are required to follow per the...
Be sure to speak into the microphone, please.
Yes, I apologize. We have a very stringent process that we are required to follow per the Code of Virginia, and that is Section 2.2-4300, which is our Public Procurement Act, that again, we are required to follow by law. Any deviation from this process requires me to immediately stop the process, go back, redo our solicitation, and start over.
Dr. Meyer?
Thank you for, I'm just gonna say it maybe a little differently.
Yes, sir.
Because I know we had several speakers tonight.
Yes, sir.
Basically asking us to table this, and because they want to be able to meet with the team and renegotiate. And what you're basically saying is, by the process that was followed, which is laid out, the procurement office is following the code and the process. And it so happens that because one particular vendor was not within the top three, or may have been within the top three, but was not within the top two, therefore was not made available the option of negotiation.
That is correct, yes, sir. What happens is, every vendor afforded, was afforded the same opportunity coming in. All proposals were evaluated equally based on the criteria that was set forth in solicitation and that was published. The top three vendors were selected after all scores were complete, and from those top three, after we conducted our interviews, we negotiated with the top two.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Braswell?
I want to thank you also. I had an opportunity to look at the criteria that was used to evaluate the companies that were bidding. The criteria was clearly defined, it was properly weighted, and as a result, not, the areas in which we were concerned with received the primary consideration. And so I believe that you guys did an excellent job in making sure the criteria is properly weighed and doing a good service by Spotsylvania County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell.
Dr. Meyer?
I'm gonna say it a little differently, for answering a question, for the purpose of answering the question that was posed during public speaking.
Yes, sir.
Public comment time. Just because a firm is local and has prior experience, actually, the prior experienced firm had the leg up, but if the proposal, along with the other nine, you know, did not rise to the level, just because it's local doesn't mean that privilege is given or exception is given. We can't do that.
Correct, yes, sir.
I mean, if that was, if that exception was given, then we would have to state it upfront in the RFP process that that was a criteria that would be used for weighting the proposals that were received.
Correct, we would have had to state that we had a local preference, and we did not in our criteria.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ms. Shelley?
Well, as you mentioned, the 2.2-4300, I had pulled it up as well, just to see what it says, and we've done everything legally that we are supposed to do. And I guess that's all, thank you.
Thank you. I am a stickler for the rules. You can ask Ms. Gaines especially.
Mr. Twig?
For the sake of the details of this new contract company, what is our response to emergency services? And explain the detail of logistics as to how that will satisfy our needs as they are now being met, please?
We were told that we would get a verbal 30-minute response for any calls that are put in, at the maximum. They said generally, it's immediate, 24/7 response, and then onsite within one hour.
And is that standard, present tense?
As far as I'm aware, that is a standard operation.
Present tense is my question.
Oh, present tense with our...
Are we doing that now?
With our current vendor, yes, sir, I believe that is the same as with our current vendor.
Thank you.
Ms. Shelley?
And our employees, our current employees, would, they would have first, they're gonna be able to apply for a position with the new contractor.
Yes, ma'am, we have included a transition plan with the new vendor, and that we will absolutely have them meet with our principals to go over the staffing within the building, and to make recommendations for staffing to come over and to remain part of the schools.
Any further discussion? I'll call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried seven zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And moved on to 14.03. Mr. Lynn, would you join us for the first reading of the Code of Conduct?
Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. Each year, staff reviews policy JFC, Code of Student Conduct, and as appropriate, other discipline-related policies and regulations in order to ensure compliance with changes in legislation, and to consider other revisions that may be necessary or appropriate. This review is conducted by a committee composed of school leaders, teachers, division leaders, parents, and student representatives. All changes have been reviewed and approved by legal counsel. Staff recommends that the school board approve for first reading the proposed revisions to JFC, Code of Student Conduct, and JFCR, long-term suspension and expulsion as presented. I am prepared to answer your questions.
Can we get a motion?
Make a motion to approve the Code of Conduct.
Motion made to approve the recommended action by Ms. Shelley, and a second by Mr. Blaine. Any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Lynn.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to 15.01. Any unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move on to 15.02. Any new business? Mr. Twig?
I continue to be amazed at the talents of our theater arts and music students and leaders, and I attended this past week's musical, Joseph, in the amazing technicolor two at Spotsylvania High School. And to all of our leaders and students, a congratulations on a job well done. And to our fourth and fifth graders at Brock's Seussical a few weeks back, this county has sensational talent brewing at that particular school, but I know it exists throughout our county school system. Again, another fascinating performance. But it's just overwhelming to me to observe the talents of these young folks at all ages. And we have talented leaders that are guiding our students and teaching them, and giving them the opportunity to perform in a variety of ways. I think it's sensational and certainly a very important part of our academia here in this school system. So hats off to all, thank you.
Any other new business? Ms. Shelley?
I just wanted to ask for the floor after we're done with new business.
Ms. Baylock?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a very bittersweet announcement for me. I did tell you the last meeting I had announcements coming. My family and I have been in a process quite a while of purchasing a new home, and we've done so. It's a very good time, I say it's bittersweet because I will be moving, which puts me in a different district, and I have declared my candidacy for delegate of the 88th District. The reason that is new business is because I will be asking Ms. Gramps, our chairman tonight, to begin the process of appointment, as I will have to vacate this seat before it is up. It is, it's been such an honor. And I'm not gone yet, so we've still got time. So Ms. Gramps, I will turn this over to you. I'm announcing that my last as a school board member will be June 30th, which is the end of the fiscal year for a school division. And as of July 1st, I will be a resident in the other district, therefore not able and improper for me to continue to hold this seat if I'm not completely residing, and that will be effective July 1st. So I would like to ask you to allow me to effectively resign June 30th, 2017. If I could turn it over to you for direction of this board of how we handle that at this point.
Of course, thank you. As Virginia Code, Section 24.2 through 228, interim appointment to the electric school board reads, the remaining members of the school board within 45 days of the office becoming vacant shall appoint a qualified voter of the election district in which the vacancy occurred to fill the vacancy. If a majority of the remaining members cannot agree or do not act, the judge of the circuit court shall make the appointment. The person appointed shall hold office until the qualified voters fill the vacancy by special election or current election pursuant to the Virginia Code, Section 24.2-226. So this has happened before on this board, and following a timeline from the similar vacancy, first, we already have contacted the lawyer just for some guidance, but there's still a couple other questions that we would contact for. Then we have to run an announcement to the Freelance Star to publicize the vacancy. And we do that three times. And then candidates submit a letter of interest, current resume, and letters of recommendation not less than two and no more than five to the deputy clerk for distribution and consideration by the school board. And then the candidates will present themselves to the school board and public during a special meeting, and school board convenes a closed meeting to interview candidates who supply the proper paperwork and present themselves. And then there will be a date that we make a selection of the candidate. And that's the timeline that we've followed in the past. And my recommendation, and we are not, I'm not 100% clear that, we just have to confirm with our lawyer, is that we can, since we have a date, June 30th, as a vacancy date, I assume we can start publicizing and start the interview process, and then we can not be a efficient board, we won't be a member short starting July 1. So I would like to be able, if we're all in agreement, to start according to the timeline and according to the code with the process that we need to enact. So do we need a motion for that?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion that we follow the prescribed timeline and consult with our legal counsel to make, you know, to confirm our path, but that we go ahead and, based on guidance from legal counsel, prepare that announcement, get the announcement posted, and run, you know, on three different occasions with the Freelance Star. Then we can go ahead and schedule when and to whom the application letter and resume would be submitted, and then you, as the chair, can call that meeting, you know, at which time we can hear from the candidates, because they have to present themselves in public, but we interview in private. One second.
Motion made by Dr. Meyer to follow the timeline that I previously read with those steps, with hope to fill the seat as of July 1st. And a second by Mr. Braswell. Any discussion? Mr. Twig?
Does the 45 days technically start on June 30 when she resigns?
As I read from the date of vacancy, correct. So we can move faster than that.
And where did you say you're moving to? I missed it.
She didn't.
Another district?
Yeah, I'll be on the other side.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain.
Yeah, one.
Motion carried, five in favor, one against, and one abstaining. And we have another piece of new business, Mrs. Baylock.
Also, just to note, because I hold leadership on the board and vice chair, I didn't know if we wanted to have discussion on how that would be handled as well or at a later time, but I want to make sure that I don't leave anyone hanging. And I know I work as your vice chair right now, and I want to make sure that that discussion was had as well in my other committee seats. It may not be something for tonight, but just things I have been, you know, worrying about over the past few months, so if we want to talk about that now, or I just want to make sure that we get that in place, too.
I think we'll work on that as we normally do, that's normal in our public process, until the action is made. Is there any further new business? Ms. Shelley, you requested the floor.
Just one second.
Oh, Dr. Meyer?
As was mentioned, and I think Mr. Twig was referencing this, that the vacancy will actually occur as of July 1st. We confirm with legal counsel the action we've taken, that we can anticipate this, and so that we could have the position, being able to, the new person being able to assume the position come July 1. And we can confirm that with legal counsel, but I don't see any reason why it would not, but just confirm.
And that's the only reason I object.
Do you concur with legal counsel?
No, to speeding through the process.
Speeding through the process.
I simply made a comment.
I just wanted, this isn't new business, this is just a comment to say, graduations are gonna be before our next meeting. So I just want to, ahead of time, wish all of our graduates congratulations. It's less than a month away, so I just wanted to let everybody know, all of our graduation ceremonies will be livestreamed, and people will be, so therefore, anyone across the world will be able to watch graduations, so I just want to make sure that that was out there. Thank you. And it will be on, everything is posted, it's already there on the website, just so everybody knows that it's there, and they can start sharing those links to the graduation ceremonies. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell, would you like the floor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a personal note, I want to thank all of Spotsylvania County's school employees, administrators, anyone that has actively seeded into the lives of young people so that they can do their very best. I just recently had the joy of my life of watching my son graduate from college, hallelujah. And I know that there's people that are sitting in this room, those are sitting at home watching on television or just going about their daily lives, that seeded so much into my son's life, and I don't take it for granted. And I know they do it... And I know they do it selflessly, but this board member just wants to say thank you and extend my gratitude for what you do. And I am so honored that you give me the opportunity to go and fight for you each and every day, because you're truly worthy. Thank you.
And Mr. Br...
Anyone else wishing to seek the floor? Motion to adjourn by Ms. Shelley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.